Um, good evening. Thank you for coming to the Oak Park City Council Zoom meeting. We will be having call to the audience later at the meeting, at the end of the meeting, either by phone or by just joining the Zoom meeting. You're kind of on hold for a time until we get to the end. This meeting is called to order. Would City Clerk Ed Norris please call the roll?
Mayor McClellan?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Radner?
Here.
Councilmember Weiss?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Okay, well, that's certainly a quorum. Before we approve the agenda, please note we are adding a contract with Jade Strategies as number fourteen F. So is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
You can second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the consent agenda, which are routine items presented without discussion. Regular city council meeting minutes of April twentieth, twenty twenty. Special council meeting minutes from the same date. Special council meeting minutes of April twenty first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty?
Ah, I got that's wrong.
Yeah. Planning Commission meeting minutes of March ninth. Retirement Board minutes of January twenty seventh. And a request to schedule a public hearing on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one annual budget for Monday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty, at seven P M. That will be at the regular council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns and Councilmember Weiss. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. I don't see elected officials or special presentations at this point. City Attorney does have some, an update about holding public meetings on Zoom. Would you care to expand on that, Attorney Jeff?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Yes, we were just briefly discussing before the meeting the fact that Governor Whitmer's Executive Order twenty twenty forty-eight, which is the current order under which we're holding the remote meetings, expires on May twelfth. So there's a question and obviously a concern that we are still concerned with the COVID crisis and the need to social distance and concern for coming back in person at City Hall for meetings. At this time, the Michigan Association of Municipal Attorneys, we are petitioning the governor. We expect that she will extend Executive Order twenty twenty forty-eight, so we will have continued a permission or authority to continue to hold remote meetings during the crisis. However, there are prior Attorney General opinions and the discussion has been, again, with the expectation that we will need to social distance, that there will be some form of remote meeting probably until our June first, twenty twenty meeting. Of course, if and when a new order is issued, I will provide that to Counsel.
Thank you very much, Attorney Jeff. Next, we are right to the City Manager portion. City Manager Eric Tonga.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of Council. I'd like to ask Assistant City Manager Kevin Ye to go over fourteen A for me, please, sir.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Change order number two and payment application number four for the two thousand nineteen lead water service replacement project M seven oh four. It is recommended that change order number two for the two thousand nineteen lead water service replacement project M seven oh one be approved to DeAngelo Brothers of Northville, Michigan for the amount of sixty thousand eight hundred dollars. It is further recommended that payment application number four for the same be approved for the amount of seventy one thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Funding is available in the Water and Sewer Fund for this project. And I would like to note that we conducted several thousand inspections of homes looking for lead water service. Of the three hundred and seventy-five that were listed as lead galvanized or unknown from our records and another hundred and eighty that were built before nineteen forty. Of the homes, of those homes, we found lead in a hundred and ten. So we did inspections of all the homes that we suspected and, you know, probably a couple thousand more. And we found a hundred and ten with lead. We have replaced a hundred and eight of those services. The other two homes that we did not replace are vacant homes. We've sent letters, certified letters. We've tried every which way to get ahold of the property owners for these properties. They're not been able to get ahold of them, but we did replace a hundred and eight lead services, and that's all that we know of. And all that we would even suspect based on the age of the home and the areas that, you know, we suspected have had on. The average price of a lead service replacement was three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, so Kevin, so you're asking, I thought we had budgeted or handed in our budget for those replacements. So you're asking for an additional seventy one thousand dollars? Sixty thousand plus seventeen thousand?
I apologize. This change order is for sixty thousand eight hundred. It'll bring the total contract cost to three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. And the original amount that was approved was three hundred thousand. So the total, we've already had one change order, and this change order would bring the total to three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. And like I said, that will complete the project other than the two that when we are able to get those, we want to replace those, so we have no more lead services on the system.
Okay, so what happened?
This was, this was additional pipes that were discovered, needed replacing, that weren't in the original estimate? Is that, how did we get the additional?
Yes, I apologize. We didn't know how many we had. So like I said, we had, we had three hundred and seventy-five that, just based on our records, we thought were possible, had led. And of those, we did inspect all of those, and of those, a hundred and ten total headlight citywide.
Yeah, I get that part, but I'm just curious as to what change. So this is the, what, second or third change order?
This is the second change order. So when we were, when we originally awarded this contract, I tried to make it as clear as possible that we had budgeted three hundred thousand dollars total in the budget. That was not an indication of how many we had to do. We didn't know how many we had to do. We put a placeholder in the budget, and when we budgeted for this, as a matter of fact, we didn't know to what extent we were going to be doing the project. We thought we were going to kind of offer it to residents as a special assessment or some other form of doing the project. But as it came out that we were required to replace lead services, we jumped right on it, and we bid the project out immediately, and we were prepared and went ahead with it. So we put a placeholder in the budget of three hundred thousand, actually thinking it was going to be a several year project. Actually, when we were talking about the budget the other night, we talked about in the C I P is a hundred thousand dollars for lead water service replacement because we thought we were going to continue that project for a few years further. In fact, we didn't get it all done this year except for the two.
So what you're saying is, out of the three hundred, we have budgeted three hundred thousand dollars, but it costs more than that to do the number of homes that we were able to get in and change. Is that what you're saying?
Simply, simply because we didn't, when we budgeted this, we didn't know how many we were going to have to do, and we didn't actually plan on doing them all at once like this. We planned on basing them over a several year project. But we ended up wanting to get them all done, get our system free of lead, and that's what we did. So we very aggressively attacked it, more so than we had planned when we put the budget together, you know, back a year ago now.
And Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Um, before we go a little further with questions, I don't, did we get a, a motion? No. Let's get it on the, on the, on the books here. Is there a motion to approve this change order and payment application?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Now, help yourself with questions, yes.
So I know we just went through this budgeting process, but we don't have the replacement of the lead water lines in twenty twenty-one or going forward because we're finished, correct?
Right. We won't need any of that funding, anything.
All right, so this is, the city believes that it has done all the lead lines that need replacing.
Except for the two that I had mentioned, yes.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's, that's amazing. That puts Oak Park at the cutting edge, I think, for cities in Michigan and probably around the country.
It's because of how amazing our mayor is.
That too. All right. Any other, other questions for Assistant City Manager about this vote? Clerk Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Assistant City Manager Kevin Ye, if you could do fourteen B as well, please.
Attached is proposed change order number one and payment application number one for the two thousand twenty sewer lining project seven oh three. This project will rehab, or has rehabilitated damaged sewer lines throughout the city. And what this is, what this project is, is we line the sewers with what's called a cured-in-place pipe. So we put a resin lined pipe in, we bake it, and it becomes a structural pipe. The project is now complete, other than the punch list. The change orders to add sewer lines that needed rehabilitation, but were not televised at the time the project went out. So we found them as part of the televising project, and we added them right in. There's five hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this project, and we only expended two hundred and thirty-two as the original bid contract. So we had room to add these, and we wanted to get these pipes repaired as soon as possible. It is recommended that proposed change order number one for the two thousand twenty sewer lining project M seven oh three be approved to Inland Waters Pollution Control, Inc., for the total amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. It is further recommended that payment application number one for the same be approved for the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents. Funding is available in the Water and Sewer Fund for this project.
Is there a motion for this approval?
So moved.
Second.
It's Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Burns and Councilmember Edgar. This is the one that had the additional, that we found, we, by, by televising, we found the extra pipes that needed repair, and that was the extra. Is this the one that has the G I S format, or is that the, oh, no, that, never mind. Hold that for the next one.
Yep, that's the next one.
Questions about the sewer lining? It's kind of amazing. You can put something in a sewer and bake it in hot, inside, and it's lined.
Yes, that is correct. It becomes a structural pipe after they bake it. They've been doing it for a long time. We've, we've been, geez, I think we started putting cured-in-place pipe in in Oak Park, probably close to twenty years ago.
Sounds magical.
It works great.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Assistant City Manager Ye, fourteen C, please.
Thank you. Attached is a proposal from O H M Advisors to provide support to city staff in developing some of the city's water system into the G I, into G I S format. The Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, S E M C O D, has a water infrastructure project going on currently and received, offered grants to community, and offered, recently offered grants to communities. The City of Oak Park's Engineering Department applied and received ten thousand dollars. This work will also be a trial run to see if the city would like to pursue adding the rest of our system and G I S assets in the future. It is recommended that City Council approve the attached proposal from O H M Advisors to provide support to city staff in developing some of the city's water system into G I S, which amount, which amounts, the actual amount of ten thousand dollars, which is the grant amount upon review of the City Attorney's Office. This assistance was not specifically budgeted, however, it will be a hundred percent reimbursed as part of the grant funding. Therefore, it is recommended that the ten thousand dollars for these field inspections be transferred from the Water and Sewer Fund balance for this expenditure to fund five nine two eighteen five three eight eight oh one. The city's portion will be zero dollars.
Freebie, my kind of, is there a motion to approve this proposal?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns? Second.
Second.
Councilmember Radner? I have a question about what is G I S format?
What, what G I S is, it's Global Information System is what it stands for, and basically what it does is it puts your, it'll put our water utilities, we have a G I S map already, which was all of our parcels, all of our roads. What it is, is it's a map. It is a, a map of Oak Park that is laid out on what would be equivalent to the earth with latitude and longitude. And it is actually what we had done when we did the flyover for our future stormwater expenses that are going to be coming up. But what it is, is it's a, a format that basically takes the, the earth and lays out the utilities on the map as they would real, would be really in, you know, on the earth. And it's just a very accurate way of mapping, and it's something that we, we have, we've been moving forward with in trying to put everything on in G I S format. So we have a lot of things on there already, and actually the county probably ten years ago provided a map of Oak Park in a G I S format with their parcel data on there. And we've been working with that and adding to it and trying to update our maps so that they're actually real, true information based on, you know, the earth, and then you can use a GPS to find real locations and things like that. It's just kind of the, you know, an advanced way of mapping, and it's a great way to, to get a lot of our water infrastructure on there.
So maybe correct errors of old maps, is that?
That's all part of it, to have accurate mapping, yes, exactly what we have.
All right. So we, this is kind of a test to see if we want to continue this further, is that correct?
We do, and really, we do have quite a bit on our G I S maps, but our water system is updating. So we're going to put some, or needs to be, a lot of it needs to be put on there, and.
And what does that leave still to be added to this format?
I think this is probably about twenty to twenty-five percent of our water system that would be updated with this.
And what would it cost to do the other seventy-five percent?
Well, just trying to do the basic math of it, probably an additional thirty thousand dollars or so. It is something that we, we could probably do in a little period of time. We do have a GPS unit that we can map a lot of this. But to get this started and to get this going in the right format, we got a grant to do it, and it's a great way to start.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Weiss?
Um, so we already received the grant, correct? Or have we not received it yet?
We, we have received the grant, yes.
Okay. Okay. So that, so it, they'll just basically reimburse the expenditure? Is that how it works?
Correct.
Great.
Where's the grant come from?
From S E M C O D, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments.
Nice. Ready to vote? Clerk Norris?
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
And Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Um, I have, just going back to what we just talked about, I had made a note about missing water structures or a new water main needed that I wasn't clear on. Do you recall anything of that from those notes? Assistant City Manager Ye?
I'm sorry, no, I, I don't, from the, from the budget session?
That could be. I'll, I'll get back to you later on it then. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, fourteen D is coronavirus update. Councilmembers, so a couple of things. As of five P M yesterday, Oak Park had four hundred and eighty-four positive cases and forty-six deaths. There, there are zip codes, two zip codes in Southfield who have higher positive cases, but, and one has a high, has fifty deaths, so we're not in that top category. There are three zip codes in Southfield who have a higher rate per one thousand people, so the, the, the issue is really hyper-concentrated in this area of Southeast Oakland County. We are working on a preparedness and response plan. We had our, we had a meeting this morning, going over a draft of that. We had our first employee town hall meeting last Friday. We went over a whole bunch of different things and trying to establish some protocol for when employees return back to work. As of right now, unless our employees have been determined to be essential, our employees are slated to come back when the governor's stay-home, stay-safe, the lockdown provision of that order is lifted. And right now, that order is, the lockdown portion of that order is slated to expire on May fifteenth. And then going into fourteen E, councilmembers, what I would like to ask your permission to do is if the order expires on the fifteenth, the next Monday from that would be the eighteenth. And then I would, I would like to ask your permission to extend our close-to-the-public status all the way out to the twenty-sixth, which would be the Tuesday, and that Monday, the twenty-fifth is Memorial Day. So it would be the very next day, Tuesday, May twenty-sixth. And so that's what I'm asking your permission for in fourteen E.
The reason?
Because that week will give us a chance to, you know, the staff that who aren't determined essential, who are not already in, we will be bringing them back in in phases. And during the week that we're close to the public, but our staff is here, we want to phase them in and, you know, work out all the kinks, make sure their, their workspaces are spaced properly. You know, we have partition glass up in some workspaces. We have cleaning agents and, and all over the city in spaces. But that week will give us an opportunity to work out all of the issues and prepare for the time when we open to the public. And that's notwithstanding the fact that, you know, the governor might extend the lockdown provision, which then would, of course, extend this. So I'm asking you to extend our closure of currently closed buildings to the public for one week beyond when the governor's lockdown order expires, and I hope that makes sense.
Do we have a motion to extend the city's lockdown to the week after the governor's?
So moved.
Ms. Mayor Pro Tem?
Sure.
And Solomon Radner? Discussion, questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Weiss?
If I may, I know a lot of people are eager to get back to normal and, but obviously, this is still an ongoing issue. We have very, we have a lot of cases in Oak Park, and safety is our number one concern. So I think this recommendation is really important. It gives us time to prepare. It gives our staff critical time to make sure that they have systems in place and feel safe and that the public is safe before they enter back into the buildings. And then, City Manager, I think you mentioned to this also, we're also extending waiving fees, correct? Like credit card fees if people are paying online until the twenty eighth?
So we, we would need to do that, you know, during the same time when the buildings are closed. We would need to extend those for that same period of time, if counsel so chooses. By the way, another thing, if I could, just elaborate a little bit more on that. One of the things that our recovery team meeting, our recovery team group in their meetings is trying to determine is if, what recommendation are we going to provide counsel at, at your next meeting for, for example, when patrons come into city buildings? Are we going to require that they wear masks? And, you know, what is that protocol? You'll note that a lot of these retailers out here are requiring their patrons to wear masks when you enter their facilities. And so, you know, obviously, we're going to seek guidance from our, from our legal staff, but we're going to need to decide those kinds of things for when we do, in fact, reopen to the public.
Is, my understanding is that the governor is requiring in her last order masks inside buildings. Is that correct?
Currently, it, yes, and that's inside of enclosed spaces, so that's part of the current order. But for all we know, that could be amended and, and changed when the lockdown expires. So obviously, we'll, we'll have to adhere to whatever her executive order is. But I, I have no inside information at this point telling me what she plans to do. She did extend the closing of the libraries across the state to May twenty-eighth, I believe. So no matter what, we would not be able to reopen our library until well after May twenty-eighth.
So then the question is, if we're requiring masks in city buildings, we need to provide them? Coming into the library or coming into the city hall for somebody who doesn't have one, but has business to do? That's another question to look into.
Yeah, that's, and I, I just used that as an example. There's a hundred more things that need to be decided as part of this protocol. And Councilmembers Edgar and Weiss are serving on this committee for the very point that we're going to come back to the full body with a whole series of recommendations, hopefully at your next meeting.
Oh, good.
But there's a whole series of, I won't belabor it tonight, but there's a whole series of things that need to be decided. That's, that's one of the important ones, of course.
Hey, um, let's see. Do you need a vote about extending waiving fees or?
I, I mean, if you can include that now, that would be helpful, for sure. I mean, it would be to establish just the, the current protocol that's in place until, you know, the, based on the current order. But remember, that, that would be until after May twenty-sixth. So May twenty-sixth would be the expiration of the extension of those, those waiving of fees.
Is that currently in the order, or would we need to amend that to add it?
You, you would need to adopt that separately. You can adopt it as part of the same motion, I believe, but that would need to be adopted. And I guess, I guess I was thinking we'd do it on the May eighteenth agenda, but we can, we can do it now, too. It doesn't matter.
Okay. Do you already have, do we already have a motion?
Yes.
No, there isn't a motion.
There is.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, we have. So maybe we could amend it to include the.
Right, right now, ma'am.
City Clerk?
Right, right now, the motion, the motion is just to, to extend the closure of the city buildings one week beyond the expiration of the governor's stay-home, stay-safe order, which is the twenty-sixth. So that's the motion that's on the.
So then a possible amendment would be to add to that the waiving of fees to the same date? Waiving of fees and fines?
Can we do that in?
Yes, you, you can.
So we need, we need a vote, we need a maker of the amendment? Wave the fee?
Maybe, maybe we could word it something, because I don't know exactly. I'm assuming that also includes like library fee, fines and things currently. So maybe just extending the currently waived, extending the waiver of currently covered fees and fines until May twenty-eighth.
Well, Madam Mayor, may I just weigh in on it too? I, I, I'm, I apologize because I wasn't prepared for that part because I was going to bring that back to you. But, but I think you should, you should phrase it that you're extending the waiver of online payment fees. Because really, that's the only part that applies. The other stuff, you know, you can mail your stuff in, you can put it in the Dropbox, you don't have to pay online, but that's what it really is.
That makes sense. So then the amendment is to, the amendment then is to include waiving the online, online fees until May 28th?
26th, yeah.
26th, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion, we need a second?
Second.
Okay, now this is the vote on the amendment adding the online payment fees.
In addition to the current?
Correct.
Clerk Norris, do we need a roll call for this? Because it's waiving fees?
Yeah, that's fine. But let's do. Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
And Mayor McClellan?
Yes, so that's for the amendment added to the original motion. And now this is the vote on the whole motion, including the new amendment.
That's correct.
Okay.
That would. You ready for a roll call?
Please.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Okay, and, and then councilmembers, we'll be bringing a whole series of things back to you for your, your May 18th meeting as well. 14F is this additional contract for professional services with Jade Strategies for Communication Management, Strategic Communication Planning. I think most of you remember Jocelyn Davis, the owner of this company, but she's been assisting us in crisis communications and has done a really great job in putting a production schedule together and kind of aiding our, our productions and what we're going to be doing. So I'm asking your permission to execute this contract with her for services.
So we need a motion to approve the contract with Jade Strategies for strategic planning for 90 days?
I'm moved.
Is that Councilmember Edgar?
That was Councilmember Weiss.
Weiss, okay. All right. Yeah. All right. Discussion or questions?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Sorry, this is hard on, online. I just had a quick question under the contract itself on page, page one of two of the contract, under compensation, part four, B, payment. There's just like a handwritten thing that was, the $8,000 was crossed off and it says to be paid.
Yeah.
Could you, yeah, could you explain that?
Yeah, just our BSNA system at the time was locked up, so we weren't able to make the $8,000 payment. So we'll, we'll just, if it's approved, we'll just pay it in full. That, it won't change the full amount, just that we weren't able to make that at the time because BSNA was locked up.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Edgar?
So I just wondered, this is for, this is to extend Jocelyn's contract for the next three months?
Nice.
This is the, this is the entirety of it. So it's not to extend it for another three months. This is for the whole thing. So this contract is set to expire, you know, it's 90, it's only 90 days, and this is the first part of it. So this is not a new term.
And the city managers just didn't have the authority to approve it for the amount?
Yeah, my, my emergency spending authority, according to our finance director, goes to 10,000. And this is a $24,000 contract.
And she is really here to, her company is really here for crisis communications?
Yeah, and you know, she's, she's actually, you know, assisting us in our production schedule with the current coronavirus situation, obviously. But she's also putting together our strategy for the business communications that's going to need to come after this is, you know, starting to get behind us. Because there's going to be an economic disaster we're all going to be dealing with here very soon. So she's working on that too.
So what, what does that mean, business communications? In other words, communications to our business community?
Yeah. Yep. So this, I don't know if you can, this is a terrible, but that, she's established a production schedule for us, which, and, and provided tons and tons of insight. As you know, she was the, at, at one point, she, this firm served as our Director of Communications. So, and she has a long history with, you know, consulting other government entities. She really does a fantastic job. She's really assisted us greatly.
When we, when she started, there was no communications plan for the previous 20 years or more. And she laid out the internal plan for communicating with staff, the external plan for communicating with residents. We were in a disaster at that time because of blood, I believe. She helped with that disaster communication and did such an excellent job that the city of Birmingham copied our communications plan that she wrote. When this new crisis came up, I felt we needed some additional help.
And we've done a good job.
Thank you.
Any discussion, questions?
I have one question, Madam Mayor. City Manager, are you gonna, are, are you, is this wrapping up of your comments on the COVID situation? Or you have more to say about it?
No, I'm, I'm happy to take questions. If you have questions about it at all, I'm happy to answer those to the extent that I can.
Okay. I did receive an email from a citizen who was concerned about a couple of things regarding the number of cases we have in the city as well as testing that's available for residents. Can you talk a little bit about the testing sites that residents can go to if they want to be tested? And then also, I know we can't really speculate, but some reasons why we may have higher than average case numbers in Oak Park compared to the rest of the county?
Well, I mean, I completely understand the, the concern that our residents have with the, with the high number of cases. You're absolutely right in saying that it would only be speculation, but if I could take this opportunity to do just that, I would say that, you know, we're one of the more dense populations in Oakland County. I mean, it would make sense, and especially if you look at the zip code in the city of Detroit, just directly adjacent to us on Eight Mile, that's one of the highest concentrations in the city of Detroit. But I would say the density of our population, and I mean the population density of our, of our residents is, is much higher than the rest of the county. And that would also explain parts of Southfield and Ferndale and other places nearby. As far as testing sites, there are two testing sites within close proximity to Oak Park. There's one on Greenfield at the health center there, the, right at like 10 Mile on Greenfield. And you can call the nurse on call in Oakland County, or you can go on their website and schedule an appointment. But you can literally pull up and be tested. The other testing site is at the state fairgrounds, and that's not limited to just city of Detroit. That's, that's region wide. So same thing, you can go and schedule an appointment and, and pull up. And, you know, testing was limited to, you know, first responders and essential workers, let's say, until, you know, a couple of weeks ago. Now it's been opened up greatly. So the hope is to get as many people tested as possible. So those two sites are, are serving that, that purpose in, for Oakland County, especially our residents who are close by the state fairgrounds as well.
Just something to add to that, because I looked into that today. If anyone at home has, wants to take notes, the number to call is 800-848-5533. It's by appointment only for residents who are symptomatic. So if you're having symptoms, you could qualify for testing. It's by appointment only. So if you call today, you could get an appointment tomorrow, but not the same day. It is Monday and Wednesday at the Greenfield site and Tuesday and Thursday at the Pontiac site where the court is. It's essential workers and residents who are symptomatic. No doc note is needed. And call, call one day ahead of the appointment. That's, we, I requested that we get, because Southfield and Oak Park are dense and have a lot of cases, I didn't see why our sick people needed to drive 40 minutes into Pontiac to get tested and requested that our health department here right on Greenfield should be testing Oak Park and Southfield residents.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, may I, we, we have a motion on the floor that needs to be taken care of?
We're still, the motion is the Jade Strategies?
That's correct.
Okay, roll call for that one. Thank you.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion, Carrie?
Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the city manager report for this evening. Please stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Amen, amen. And we're looking forward to more details at the next meeting from this committee that's been working hard. It is call to the, call to the audience time. You can call in to 646-558-8656, or you can come on to the Zoom meeting. Is this, Benny, are you running the questions from, that are called in?
So I, what we're going to do is anyone who's joining via Zoom, and I see we have a couple of hands up already, use the raise your hand feature. So that can be found, if you're using Zoom and you hit manage participants, it's one of your options in the lower right-hand corner, you can raise your hand. Anyone joining us via phone and doesn't have that option, we'll get to you after this and then we'll unmute you and ask you to bring up your comments and questions based on your last name.
Well, I see Kelly Bush has her hand up.
Bush, I'm going to unmute her right now.
Hi, can you, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Kelly.
Um, I just have sort of a comment question regarding backyard chickens. I know that they are not allowed in Oak Park, but the topic has kind of been turning around on the online forums on like Facebook, and I'm personally interested in having backyard chickens that, which are currently banned. I know that there's a lot of people in the community that probably have some concerns about that, and that's why it was banned in the first place. But I was hoping to maybe get out into the community and get, you know, some information that could maybe alleviate some of those concerns and perhaps ultimately get the ordinance change to fall in line with some of the, our neighboring communities which allow, allow chickens. So just wanted to see if, where the council stands, if there's any opinions there currently? Or if this is a sort of a, you know, let the community work, work our opinions out situation?
Appreciate your bringing up a topic other than COVID. Happy to talk about chickens. I'm sure we all are. Ferndale, they started out with a smaller program, I think, five permits. They, they required annual inspection. Melanie Piana, the mayor of Ferndale, cautioned everyone that it is an expensive hobby and a consuming process. So don't go into it lightly. But, and I'm not sure if this was a way to get votes or not, but one of the ladies named her chickens after the Ferndale City Council members. So we'll leave it at that, but we will bring up chickens for discussion again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raising the question.
All right, I, I don't see anyone else with their hand up. If you're having trouble at all using that, you can always let us know in the chat. But if no one else who's using Zoom has their hand up, the only, we, it looks like we only have one person who's joined us over the phone. And their last four digits are 9774. So I've unmuted you if you have a, a comment, a public comment.
Good evening, this is Kenneth Sherman, 23840, Drummond Park. Good evening, council. Hope everybody's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I just sent Mr. Tungate an email showing that the Oakland County Health Department opened up a testing site in the city of Novi at their civic complex at 10 Mile in Novi. So there's a third testing site now open by the county, just so you know that, that happened today. And two other points, I was the individual that Councilmember Weiss referenced regarding the statistics for the city of Oak Park regarding the COVID virus stat. I had emailed the city, the, the city council and also Oakland Commissioner Zach regarding my concerns over the rising statistics. And I was disheartened to, to not to hear back from anybody from city government. I did hear back a few times from Commissioner Zach, but I never heard back from anybody from the city of Oak Park regarding my concerns as to why our diagnosis numbers and deaths kept rising over the last month or so, although City Manager Tungay kind of addressed that. But I had suggested that somebody from the Oakland County Health Department be requested to address that at a city council meeting, and obviously that hasn't happened. And I still think that would be a good idea for Oak Park residents to hear directly from the health department as to why, you know, we're having these statistics in the city of Oak Park. And then my other point is, I had sent an email at the beginning of April suggesting that city cable could be better used for informational purposes regarding COVID-19 information to the residents. And that hasn't happened. I mean, you know, on cable, there's old news headlines, there's outdated videos that are playing, and there's nothing that's current regarding the COVID as it relates to the city of Oak Park. And I don't understand for, you know, residents that don't have accessibility to Facebook or a computer, and if they have access to, you know, channel 15 or 16, why we're not making use of our communications in a better way. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Crystal, can you give us directions if you're on Zoom? How to raise your hand again? What, which, which thing's on the bottom?
So there, if you're on a computer, you want to click on, on the very bottom panel, you want to click on manage participants, which gives you the opportunity to see everyone who's joined, everyone's name. And at the bottom of that, in the right-hand corner, you'd see a raise your hand option.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, if you're on your phone, it's a little bit different. If you're using a smartphone, it's on the bottom right and there's three little dots and you click on the, the three little dots. And you click on the, the three little dots, then one of your options is, is to raise your hand. We'll give it a minute.
And if you, uh, do have anything you'd like to say, uh, please feel free to call anyone on city council or, um, in the office at city hall, uh, if you, uh, if you think of it after this meeting.
And I think we should ask the city clerk also if he's received any comments to read into public comment.
Clerk Norris, have you received any comments for public comment?
Madam Mayor, I have not received any email or, um, communication like that.
All right. All right. Um, if there's no, uh, no one else who wishes to speak, uh, it's call to the council. Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Thank you, everyone, for joining us and please continue to practice social distancing. Stay safe. Only go out if you have to. This is a serious situation.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Thank you. Councilmember Radner?
Well, um, have a good evening, everybody. There's one thing that I, I would like to say, and, uh, that is something that Kenneth Sherman, uh, brought up. As crazy as this sounds, that, the real answer is nobody knows. You know, we have, uh, good people working here and, and Eric, uh, you know, kind of gave his best guess based on what he knows as to why Oak Park is such a hotspot. But the sad reality is nobody really knows because this is so brand new. And everybody, for the most part, is doing their part and it's good. Everybody should be doing their part. Who knows? You know, it could be in, in five years, there'll be the study that's done, which explains it all. But right now, there's just so much that's, that's not known. So all we can do right now is, uh, continue to do what we're being told to do by the experts and pray for the best. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember, um, let's see. Edgar?
Thank you all for tuning in. And, um, I, I'm going to be thinking a lot about chickens and backyards now. So, yeah, maybe it's a good idea. I don't know. Um, wouldn't have to buy eggs so often. I, um, stay safe, everybody. Good night.
Um, and Councilmember Weiss?
Sorry, I muted myself. Good evening, everyone. Um, uh, thank you, everyone who's called in and, uh, spoke. Uh, thank you. Ken, for your comments as well. I think as, as Councilmember Radner said, we're really trying to wrap our heads around it. One thing that I will say, you know, we, obviously, we always want to thank our first responders and our essential workers, uh, healthcare workers and others who are putting their lives on the line every day to keep everything functioning for the rest of us. But I also want to thank our residents who are, um, doing everything that they can to keep themselves and their friends and neighbors and family safe by continuing to social distance, even as it gets harder to do so. Um, and I just want to remind everyone to hang in there because the weather's breaking and we all want to go outside and have fun and we, and we should. But as we do that, we need to continue to social distance. Um, because unfortunately, if we stop doing that, then all the progress that we're making could be gone overnight. So, um, thank you, everyone, for everything that you're doing. Uh, keep it up and have a good night.
Thank you very much. We all know these are challenging times. We're ending week six of the mandatory shutdown. While we don't get to choose our challenges, we can choose how we react to them. And I have been extremely proud of, uh, Oak Park residents and businesses, uh, stepping up. I'm not sure if a police officer could be named a saint, but I'm considering nominating Robert Cook, who serves as a police officer all day, goes home at night and sews masks and then comes in on his free time and gives them away for nothing. Laura Rock is, uh, another Oak Park resident on Park Lawn who is working full-time making masks to give away. Tiffany Pugmeyer is our artist who is putting, um, art replicas on the sidewalk just to work out her COVID-19 frustration. And I, when she came and did mine, I said, I, I did my part. I gave you, uh, a way to work out your frustration. And I got this beautiful sunflower on my sidewalk. Kelly Hotel, uh, is, uh, getting people going on bear hunts and, uh, just, people are putting food out. There are things going on that we don't even know about, where, um, people are reaching out to others. We all want tighter bonds and deeper care. We've learned new ways to reach out to one another like this way. But I've seen people of all stripes showing compassion and courage in the face of suffering. And, uh, I'm just proud of y'all. Have a good night and stay safe out there. This meeting is adjourned.